Praise 14, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come back, everybody. Let the roll call show that Chief Vogel and Chief Collins. Chief Vogel should be joining us. He is on a call right now, I believe. At this point, we'll move forward to the approval of the December 10, 2018 minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the bills? Anyone have anything for the bills tonight?
I had one.
Okay. Councilmember Kibble?
I'm not sure if it'll be able to be attended. It was for Rob. Oh, no, I take that back. Maybe Paul will know that there was a bunch of 3,700 bucks worth of concrete for sidewalks. Do you have a sense of where that might have been used?
Which page are you looking at?
Two of the... Two of six in the invoice distribution, the check report.
I will check on that for you.
It's not an emergency. If you find out something, I'd just have an interest in knowing.
I'll move the bills.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the attorney bills. Does anyone have anything for the attorney bills?
I'll move the bills.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of this evening's agenda?
I'll move the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we're going to open the floor for public comment. Rules of conduct for public comment at council meetings. Members of the public may speak at a council meeting upon recognition of the mayor. Public comment may only occur during periods designated on the agenda for public comment or a public hearing. A person may speak for up to two minutes during each of the two public comment periods on agenda items or non-agenda items. Waivers of the time requirement may only be granted in the discretion of the mayor, and waivers to speak at a time other than a designated comment period may only be granted by a council. Any person wishing to make a presentation longer than two minutes or requiring audio-visual equipment is asked to contact the city clerk requesting to appear on a future agenda. A person may only address council from the podium. Only one person may occupy the podium at a time. All remarks are to be directed to the mayor and council. Speakers are not to engage in direct dialogue with other meeting attendees. Any person who violates the rules of conduct disturbs the peace at the meeting and/or interferes with the meeting may be warned, ordered to be seated, removed, and/or ticketed. This summarizes Council Resolution 04-18. At this time, if you wish to speak, please state your name and address.
How you doing? Good evening. Brian Lehrer, 716 Grand Court. At the last meeting, we discussed a PPO hearing against Carl Richards. And I did receive the transcripts from that hearing, and I'll be touching that a little bit more on my second public comment. But on one of your forums that you stated for the PPO hearing, you stated that Carl owns a firearm and also owns a concealed weapons permit. And you checked those two boxes, under penalty of perjury. Do you have information or proof that Carl owns a weapon or a concealed weapons permit? Because I am perfectly aware that Carl does not own a weapon, and there is no law enforcement agency that has a weapon that has been given to them that was in possession of Mr. Richards. You indicated that he had weapons on his bike. Number two, your age is listed as 28 years old, but you presented records to the court in requesting a PPO going back to 1979. You were born in 1990, so you are telling the court and this council and the public that anything before 1990, you were beyond terrified of Carl before you were even conceived? I find that hard to believe. Number four, on 9/26/94, Carl was shot in the butt by a male with a BB gun. You listed this information to the court for information to process a PPO. How did Carl getting shot in the butt cause you terrible pain and affect your daily life? You were four years old. I'll be speaking at the next comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we will close public comment, and we'll move on to our cultural arts presentation.
Hi, folks. Joseph Burns, 329 Lyon Boulevard in South Lyon. I always forget to do that. Anyway. I just hope that you got everything ahead of time, like the brochure and stuff that Kemahaylik did, which is really wonderful, and the update to the mayor and city council. So, we do have an ambitious plan, and there are some changes I want to talk about very quickly. We have two people cycling off as commissioners, but they never get out of our clutches because both of them have agreed to stay on as... Not as commissioners, but as Lynda Graham as chair of fundraising and Linda Robinson as chair of outreach. And one of the examples of that is that the library and the Culture Arts Commission have come together, and we're going to have artists that are going to be showcased at the, you know, South Lyon District Library. And Linda Robinson is in charge of that, and she's curating that. So, we're already starting, you know, so we're still doing that kind of stuff. She had a family member she's dealing with, and Lynda Graham's husband retired and wants to travel. And she has to make a commitment of three to four weeks with him, so it's like, okay. But we're still getting their skill set, which is nice. And I like to talk that we always... We have a really deep bench. A lot of the people that we have... I haven't mentioned Heather Maria Montilla, and everybody has great skills, and they've done lots of projects, so that part's good. So, even though this is kind of ambitious, we feel we can do it. One of our new chairs also is Joe Matuszak, who is going to be in charge, has agreed to be chair of public art, and has agreed to come on the commission since we're down one. And then we also know that Bridget McDowell, who has a background in electronic media and stuff, is going to take over Linda Robinson's part. So, even though the chairs are changing, some things are staying the same, and we're actually getting more people, which is what we want. I think because it's a fun commission, we get to do fun projects, and we get to surprise ourselves, we usually have means and say, what's the best thing we could do? Like, what's the coolest way to do this? And then we have to figure out who can do it, so there's that. We are making art and commerce really prominent. It was nice because I was filling out a grant, and I want to thank Dan Pelchat, Mayor Pelchat, and city manager Paul Zelenek for getting back to me quickly with letters of support and everything, and Bob Donahue also, the DDA person, getting back to me very quickly. Because what was nice was, we had done this brochure to do an overall brochure for, you know, Pumpkin Fest, and we put art and commerce prominently, and the title of our grant is art and commerce. So, it was great to like... Grant is kind of like a brief, and you have to prove it up and everything and get the letters and the support and stuff like that, so that part was good. So, we do have that going on. And I would like to let Joe Matuszak talk just a little bit about the public art project that he's doing, if you want to speak to that, because it is ambitious.
Let me just note that it's essentially a three-part project, and it is reflected in the grant that we put in there. One part of it relates to the posters that were donated to the city last year.
Well, laminated artworks.
Laminated artworks. Was it last year or the year before?
Last year, I think.
Okay. That came from the National Endowment for the Humanities in a project that they did about a decade ago called Picturing America. And some of you might recall that some of these were hanging outside. There's about 40 of them, I believe, overall.
Forty, back to back.
When you go back to back. And so, our... One of the goals is to get these up and around the city, similar to what happened with the Inside Out program from the DIA. But since the city now is in possession of these, we can rotate them around and try to make them visible and available to people on an ongoing basis. The next piece that we're working on along this line is been working with Jeff Baderak, who of course is a local sculptor, about coming up with some ideas for a piece of public art, ideally to go. And I've met with Bob Donahue with the DDA and with a meeting of the downtown business group to talk through this and get ideas and support from this. And we're hoping to have something come together. We're looking to crowdfund it, which means, of course, I will be coming and knocking on each of your doors as we go forward, and we're interested in having the public do this, so that we're not asking for public money for this. We want to do it privately and believe we can do this. Jeff and I have been going back and forth about some concepts, and it's starting to round into shape. And basically, we're looking at the theme of South Lyon, "Looking at the Future" is the theme that we're working with on this. And while I like completely insane and crazy things, this won't be anything that anyone is going to have any problems with. Rest assured that my tastes will have to wait till later. Finally, the last one of the three-pronged thing that we're trying to do is a... We want to do a kind of poetry walk that engages downtown businesses. The concept is having poets write about downtown business types. So, for example, I lost a crown last week. I had to go into my dentist, and I thought, ah, let's have poets write about dentists or dentistry. And the whole idea, of course, is that art, when it works well and at its best, makes you look at things you've looked at 100 times in a slightly different way. And so, the concept is to do almost like, you know, South Lyon has a wonderful garden walk, so we'd like to do a walk between various businesses. The intent is to take one piece that a poet has written, blow it up into a broadsheet, mount it, and have it displayed in the business. So, people are going to come in, and they're going to encounter this in ways that they would certainly not expect. And knowing poets, they'll have responses to some of these places in ways that you would not expect.
Can I say the hardware? One person that we've asked to think about doing this, she got so excited because she... We're going to include Bud Martin's hardware store, and she said, oh, pardon me?
We hope.
We hope. They haven't negotiated yet. But she said, oh, I want to write about the hardware store. And so, she sent me this phone, and the first line is, "I have always had a love of hammers." It's just like, I'm already like, this is going to be great.
So, again, we're hoping that we can get all of these things sort of coming together as we move into the summer and just sort of have a large presence over the summer of art showing up around the city.
We're thinking around June. The grant deadline is June 21, I think. So, we're looking at that budget. I think we're asking for $100 more to sort of the next budget, and that's it. It's like all the same. Those things are the same. You know, it's similar things with stuff that's different, and so it's poster money and things like that. Pretty boring in that sense. But the other great part about having the poets come and having people look at the artwork and doing explanations on that is that when I told Jeff Garrett at the Michigan Council for the Arts and Cultural Affairs about our project, he said, "Well, there's a $30,000 grant you should apply for." And I said, "Oh." And so, he's sending me information about that. It's due June 1st. It's a little quick, but we'll see, you know, what that entails. But it's funny, because once you have, you know, a good idea, people kind of line up. So, we're very excited. So, do you have any questions?
Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
So, Joe, I don't know if you remember, we talked about that sculpture thing pretty extensively at Jackery Pumpkin Fest.
Yep.
So, I'm excited to see that it's actually going to come to fruition. Just to save a little wear and tear on your shoe leather, is there going to be some sort of process for just mailing in a contribution as well?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, yeah. I mean, what basically I want to have and what Jeff and I are working on right now is something a little more concrete in terms of what the thing's going to look like.
Okay.
You know, so that people aren't just sort of shooting blind. I mean, not that I'm not... Cultural Arts Commission won't be happy to take contributions blind, but, you know...
I have a purse. You can carry it down.
But I think, yeah, I mean, if anybody wants to write a check, we'll be happy to take it.
Yeah, sure.
But that's... We'll set something up as we go along.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And similarly, that'll be similar in terms of where it's actually going to reside. Again, we want to have a sense of size and a sense of how much expanse it's going to take to know where exactly it's going to end up.
And also, a thanks to Ron Brack, who's the firm with the GPW. He gave me, like, just like this, all these numbers that I really needed for the grant for hardware and installation and stuff like that, which nobody thinks about, but you really should. So, yeah, so he was great.
Councilmember President?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I just wanted to say, I love everything that you're doing. I think this presentation is fantastic. You guys did a great job organizing it, and the fact that everything that you're doing, you're moving forward. And the Cultural Arts Commission has come a long way, so well done. My question for you, though, is, are you finding the grants on your own, or is this something that the city is helping you with?
The city's helping us with signing off on it and reading them.
But you're actually finding the grants.
Well, I did grants a long time ago, and I sort of know where some are. The $30,000 one, I hadn't heard about, and it's not on their website. So, I don't know if this is a new one that Jeff just thought of us for. Yes, please? Or what's going on with that? But we're continuing to do that.
I'm impressed.
And to be honest, the just-retired director of the Michigan Council for the Arts and Cultural Affairs, we both went to college with, so.
Perfect.
Perfect. We go back.
We'll keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurzweil.
Good evening. It's wonderful to see the two of you. As you know, I'm an ardent supporter of the Cultural Arts Commission. And Joe, I can hardly wait for the sculpture. You know, I've been anxious to get public art in the city for years and years and years. So, I'm glad that good things, you just have to sit back and wait. And I think we're very fortunate to have the both of you on the Cultural Arts Commission. I do want to also say, Joe, with respect to poetry, I think people need to know that you yourself are a fabulous poet. And I've had an opportunity to hear your poetry at Three Monk Brewery, which I have to tell you, I almost felt like I was back in Soho at some point when I was there for that poetry reading, that one fall when the leaves were rustling on the sidewalk and the poetry was going on inside. And I want to thank you for making just a great, great environment, and thank you for bringing that genre of art, you know, clearly to the city. I also want to bring to your attention that I saw on here that one of your new chairs is someone that is going to chair a new initiative in a film festival. And I just want to let you know that there's a lot of people that I know that are going to be going to the Trinity International Film Festival, and that's in Detroit. Their date is August 4th to the 12th. And this is maybe one of those events where you're a young commission and you have X amount of resources, is that maybe you work with Trinity International, and rather than, you know, recreating film festivals, is maybe create an environment for the residents here in South Lyon to make submissions. Their submission date is June 1st, over 18 and older. And Ken is looking at the software that is used to download your film. It's called Film Freeway. So, Ken's going to be taking a look at that. They are providing cash for Best Short Film, for Feature Film, for Best Director. These are cash prizes. And I spoke with the woman today who heads it, Michelle Favors. What an incredible individual. What an incredible person.
That's a lot for them.
It is. And she's been doing it... They've been doing it for 13 years, and last year at their film festival, they had Brian Smiley from Sony Pictures that came and spoke to everybody, because they have seminars that run and panels that run during that week. That's why you may want to think about giving her a phone call and maybe working with residents here and maybe giving them the training on Film Freeway, which is the software, and maybe giving some coaching. And let's try to get some applicants here in South Lyon to submit to Trinity International and see what happens. At least you opened the doors.
Yeah, I actually am always really surprised by how many and gratified by how many very high-level artists there are in the area. I mean, people have a lot of skills in a lot of different areas. And I just want to say, while that's the first project that the commissioners are not being... Are not going to do, but the chair is going to do. Rich Perry's also expressed interest, and we've talked a little bit about that, about being co-chairs and stuff, because he has a, you know, he's done it before, and he really has a big interest in it, so.
These people are professionals.
And, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, when you can get Sony Pictures in, you've got some contacts.
Along that line, we also had discussions about reaching out to a number of different film festivals, so that there's not any reinvention of the wheel and learning from best practices. I think there, you know, some of it is... Comes down to first defining what your ambitions are. I agree entirely that hooking local artists up with things is very much the way to go, and looking at the commission as a facilitating force along that line is important.
You hit the nail on the head. It's not always about producing the product. It's about becoming the vehicle that opens the door, that gives the resources to the person that has the creative interest or the talent in the community, you know, that hasn't had those avenues before. So, you're absolutely right, Joe.
Well, I will say that one of the further ambitions that we haven't gotten to yet, but that we have discussed certainly on the commission, is the idea of a kind of local artist resource and directory of who's here, what are people working on, how do you connect them together? But I don't think we're quite at the point yet. Maybe that's that $30,000 one that we get to, to do that.
Well, the thing that's good about this Trinity International Film Festival that may help your commission is that Michelle was telling me, they run programming all year long. So, if you find out that there's an interest in South Lyon for script writing or how to write a script for a movie, they've got the contacts that can run a seminar right here in South Lyon. We talked about venues today. So, they do programming all year long in the film industry. It's not just film. It's stage setting, it's software, it's script writing. I mean, this is really a phenomenal organization. It's right in your backyard, so. I just thought I would pass the information along. I mean, you do with it, you know.
Councilmember Kibble?
I love the idea, the whole idea of the movie aspect of that whole thing. And I can't help but think that, I mean, Michigan is sort of a bastion of industrial film and things, so.
Oh, yeah.
Once there's some interest shown here, hopefully that would give people an incentive to try to make contact, and it might end up springing even further.
We have a perfect downtown for people to film, and there's also great green spaces and all... I mean, it's a great place to film. I can really see that.
You know, I know that the boring budget stuff goes on. Every department has that same whoa of having to actually go through the motions, but that's the only way you're able to afford conveying that program is up and running. So, you know, I mean, I'm glad that you guys are not saying that we shouldn't be bothered with that, so. Because it is important to end up getting all the ducks in a row. I was kind of curious, the whole idea of the art that would end up being located in town. You said you're going to be taking private donations and that. Is that to be a private property, or would that be a city asset ultimately?
That's to be determined. We...
Too early to know.
Well, there's been a couple of places that have been mentioned. One of them was... Is a private site, which, you know, has some advantages to it, but there's also some public ones. Certainly, this will be something that we'll get a lot more discussion before we...
Certainly.
Get concrete.
It is starting, but...
Yeah. I love the idea of that as well, so thank you.
We do have a timeline, so. Very specific timeline, so. So, we can probably bring that home.
Councilmember Walton, you had something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to just say, this flyer was wonderful.
All Ken Mahaylik.
It was really nice. It was great to read, very informative. I looked at your timeline that you guys provided us. You have had some great events. I'm really looking forward to the Arts and Power Show again. I know that went over hugely.
Yeah, hopefully that will work this year. We're... We still have to talk to them about... We had a problem with timing, and so, well, none of us could do it. I'll just be honest.
It was very popular in the past, so I'd like to see that come back.
That was a cool...
Speaking of budgets, maybe Joe can write us a poem for ours.
Ooh, for the budget or for the council?
For just the budget writing part.
You know, I'm not going to let that go without noting that Josie is actually the more published poet of the two of us, has several books out, and is much more prolific than I am.
They have other things to do, dear.
I think it was just a challenge.
At any rate, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
I would just like to let the audience know that they're husband and wife.
Like, they couldn't tell.
What a great couple.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me. We'll move on to the discussion of downtown. Bob?
All right. Thank you. I'd like to add that DDA is very excited about partnering with the Cultural Arts Commission for this year, and we've been working closely with them and hope to do more, nail some of that down. Quickly, we had our DDA board meeting last week. Couple items that you'll notice. We will be purchasing new trash cans throughout the downtown and new flower, sidewalk-mounted flowers in addition to the baskets on the light poles. They're recycling product from Superb Fabricating, so we're going to carry it on. There's a prototype on Heinand Engineering's... I said that without stumbling. Heinand Engineering. On their porch, you can see one of the prototypes of the new trash cans. We've had a problem with the trash cans overflowing lately, so these will be larger, sidewalk-mounted. And we're pursuing a grant from DEQ for recycling and sidewalk trash cans. And since our recycling containers will be in recycled containers, we think we've got a good shot at the grant. I want to thank Marcia Callis and Abe Ayub for their service to the Downtown Development Authority. They both decided they were near the... They had one more year left on their term. They're very busy people, so they resigned effective December 31st. And later on tonight, we have one of those replacements on the agenda. So, again, thanks to Abe and Marcia, great people, great businesses, and we get to keep them downtown, and we get to keep both of them involved in events, which is great. We are really going head over heels on raising funds for the new Veterans Monument. Of course, it'll be moving out of the DDA to Depot Park, or whatever that official name is of that park. That's been a debate. But anyways, out in front of the Depot Museum, facing Pontiac Trail. And so, we're excited that a lot of in-kind services rolling in. We expect to have final in-kind service commitments and the cash by mid-May. And then we'll have a major announcement on event to kick it off, and then we hope to have the new monument. It's very ambitious, but we think we can have it dedicated by Veterans Day this fall. Let's see. Well, and then just to make sure that we kick off 2019 again with full participation, we have our first downtown business and property owners' meeting, which is a successful series we started last year. Our first one for 2019 takes place on Thursday, January 31st. They start religiously at 8:30 a.m., they end at 9:30 a.m., so business owners can get back to business. But typically, we have anywhere from 6 to 20 people last Thursday of the month at the Corner Cafe, and we go around and we introduce ourselves, and then we have an update of what's going on downtown, and there's always a door prize provided by local business. So, we'll be getting that going, and it's been a very helpful thing to communicate downtown. And lastly, 2019 is going to be a great year downtown.
Thanks, Bob. Does anyone have anything for Bob?
I do.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
Hi, Bob. Just a quick question for you. I think in the past, we had a software program that we tracked local garage sales, and we put it on the city's website for people to go and find where they were at. Is that correct, or am I... We had some type of tracking or...
I'm aware of some of that. I didn't have anything to do with it, but I'm aware, and I know that we've had some issues with the website. I know Paul intends to make some changes to the website, and...
So, we'll be bringing that back, though, for maybe for garage sales?
Yeah, there's been a lot of talk in city...
Would we be able to use that same software for, like, you know, holiday light shows?
I am probably the last person to talk to about software. But, I mean, we need to do something to improve that whole system. And so, and especially the garage sale gets a lot, and all garage sales get a lot of play. of play.
I think both would be a great thing to have on our city website, just to say, hey, come back to South Lyon, we've got all these great things. Not only do we have the big tree, but we have these other fantastic displays going on, to have dinner at one of our local businesses, stay in, stay in out of the cold out in our downtown area, you know, things like that. But in summer, a lot of people like the garage sales, and, you know, so I thought maybe if we had the software, we could partner both.
I agree. I know that we're going to be making available an events guide for the downtown and the whole community, and things like that can also be on there, because it'll also be on our website as well as a printed piece.
Great.
So, we'll coordinate that.
Great, that would be wonderful.
And have a better answer for you on the software soon.
I'm not a software guru myself, so I, you know, I just figure there's got to be something out there, and we could look into.
We'll do. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
On to new business this evening. Reappointment for the Board of Review. Explanation here is 7.6 of the Charter states, in January of each year, council needs to appoint one person to the Board of Review. Bruce Nussbaum has been a member of the Board of Review for numerous years and is willing to serve another term. Councilmember Parisian.
Is Mr. Nussbaum here tonight?
No.
I'd be happy to make the motion and thank him for his service. I'll make the motion to affirm and reappoint Mr. Bruce Nussbaum with the appointment made by Mayor Pellchat.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Bruce. New business number two, DDA Board Appointment. Thank you, Bob.
I think it's self-explanatory. Do you want to...
Yeah, I mean, I can, explanation of the topic here. At the December 13th, 2018 DDA Board Meeting, the DDA Board voted to recommend Norm Foltz for one of the two open DDA Board seats. The DDA bylaws provide for a DDA Board recommendation to the mayor, who then chooses to nominate and send the nomination to the City Council for approval. And Norm is here.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
I move to approve Mayor Dan Pellchat's nomination of Norm Foltz for appointment to the DDA Board as recommended by the DDA Board at the December 13th, 2018 DDA Board Meeting.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Norm, I just want to say that I've had my car fixed at Norm's, and I've never had a problem with it since it's been fixed. So, I want to thank you for your incredible service that you have provided to the residents in the city for decades. I really want to thank you. I also want to note your two references, Gary Fagan and John Dolan. Gary Fagan is just a wonderful human being, and just on Gary Fagan's recommendation, I would approve everybody. Gary is just a decent ethical business owner, just like yourself. Gary stays out of the politics of the city. He just comes to work, does his job, builds his reputation, takes care of his brand, which is exactly what you do. So, I think there's a lot of us that are very excited that you bring your brand to the DDA in terms of what you'll do. And then John Dolan. You know, John Dolan, the Lyon Township Supervisor, what a great individual he is. You have two great, great references there. So, I'm excited to have you on the DDA, and the reason I'm voting for you is not only because you're a person of character, but also because the DDA voted to have you on. So, they, it's their desire, and so, I just want to say welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You'll probably see my, you'll probably see my car in the next couple months.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on that for a moment, too. Norm's obviously been a business owner in the community for a long time, and I think he's going to represent the city very well, moving the city forward, and moving it forward with our DDA Director, Bob Donahue. So, I'm excited to be able to be a part of this and get you involved, Norm, so thank you.
Councilmember Kivell.
I agree with everything that's been said. I just wanted to make sure that it was understood that Bob Martin from Martin's Hardware Store was your third recommendation or reference, and I think you had three solid business owners that...
People have been around, they're all friends.
You bet, absolutely. You're a known quantity around here, so.
And he donated and shared with us.
Anyone else have anything on this? All right, well, thanks, Norm. Welcome to the team. Oh, yeah, sorry. We had a motion, and did we have a second before the discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thanks again, Norm.
New business number three this evening. First reading of an ordinance to amend the City of South Lyon Code of Ordinances, Chapter 46, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 2, Fire Prevention Code Sections 46-31 and 46-32, to adopt the 2015 edition of the International Fire Code. Chief Vogel, how are you?
Doing good, thank you.
Good.
Quick history. When I was given the job, Chief Kennedy said that this is, needs to be top priority.
Okay.
Our ISO in the city is something we're very, very proud of. We're top three in the country. And when we received this ISO of a three, they said to keep it, you'll have to update your 2006 International Fire Code. So, I worked long and hard with Tim and the new fire marshal, but unfortunately, he couldn't be here today. He got stuck in Florida. He'll be here tomorrow. He knows the more details on this. But Tim and I and Al duplicated the same ordinance, correct, by just adding 2015.
Yeah, so, these International Fire Codes are a couple hundred-page softbound books. It's amazing how much these, the people in the fire service actually have to deal with and know. But this is an update from an outdated, it's still valid, but it needs to be updated. This is the 15. The, I believe these are prepared through the ICC.
Yep, International Fire Code, which is a version of them.
Run about three years behind, so this is the most recent version of the International Fire Code that can be adopted. The next version should be coming out in the next year or so, I would think. So, this is an update of the ordinance to adopt that version of the IFC, and it does drop out one significant appendix, which deals with the Board of Appeals. So, in the current ordinance, any appeals of the Fire Code decisions go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we're going to continue with that.
Great.
Question?
Councilmember Kivell.
This is typically kind of an expensive transition, isn't it?
No, I don't think so. So, we'll just buy a book. Actually, it's online free, but Al likes to have a book, so I can either print out 400 pages or just buy him a book.
I thought that the expensive part was typically when there are changes in the code that we end up...
No, it just should be, it just, literally, it just, we're adapting the new, and it's pretty similar. Al said, there was a couple of things that Tim brought out that we, you know, opted out of, and I'm pretty confident that this should be smooth transition for the city. It just, it's, to me, I hate to see us lose our ISO three.
Well, I guess...
It would be a big tax hit for a lot of homeowners if we had to go back to a five or six.
I always led to believe that there's some expense in it. That's why we don't end up just willy-nilly following to the next...
Well, we're already a member of the ICC, so we're just adopting their next latest version. There's a new one coming out, but we won't. We're just going to go with the current 2015 that's currently in place.
Okay, well, but...
I don't think...
Why wouldn't we end up jumping to the most current one when that comes up?
Because it, so they print it, so the 2018, 2019's out there, but it doesn't, they don't adopt it until it goes through reviews, and it could be a couple of years. So, the 2015's current, you know, it just seems simple enough to get on to 2015.
Well, I don't disagree with that. It's just that, you know, I mean, when we're nine years ago...
Problem is, it could be two or three years before they adopt the 2018, and the ISO, I expect either this year or next year.
Mr. Mayor?
Tim?
So, to address Councilmember Kivell's concern, I have had conversations with Chief Vogel about this, trying to push him. I've had experience in other communities where, for example, one of the appendices requires exterior signage based on the interior use, whether there are specific hazards, and that's, that other community had seen pushback from the business owners and property owners in that it was a cost that they would have to bear to display that sign and comply with the Fire Code. We've addressed that issue. I believe we are opting out of that at this point.
Correct.
And I've been asking Chief Vogel about transition issues. Does this add costs? Are there different equipment issues that have to be dealt with? Is there a cost to the department? Are there costs to property owners? And he's been able to answer all of them.
Yeah. I'm confident that this is the best move for us, the simplest...
No, I don't disagree.
No, I know, I want to...
Typically, what seems to be where the costs are incurred is trying to find those revealing things that changed enough where it might end up being an imposition to the community, that you want to make sure that we don't employ that part of code, that's all.
Yeah, I agree, 100%.
Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Yeah, I'd just like to add an additional comment to exactly what you're saying, is that you, it's my understanding that you don't have to adopt every single...
And we didn't.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, I just want to make sure that that's my understanding, is that you don't have to adopt every single provision in it.
It would be a hardship on the town, I believe.
Exactly.
And that's what Tim was stating about the signage. So, we've opted out of that. And then the same appendixes that we had from the 2006, it was a pretty smooth transition. Luckily, he'd done it before, so he made it really easy for me. And then Al said, yep, this is what we want. Shouldn't be a burden.
Actually, it's my understanding that if you just carte blanche, go in and adopt every single revision, you have too many moving parts going on with respect to your ordinances. And sometimes, if you're trying to focus on one particular area, which in this particular case, it looks like it was with hydraulic fluids or special kinds of fluids, as I was reading through this, that seems to be, it's your Class 1 and Class 2 liquids, is that that seems to be the area that you're focusing on. So, sometimes, when you adopt these provisions, you also have to have additional training in terms of how to, so this gives you time to get people trained to deal with the enforcement. I think you're doing it...
I think we vented this really well for the city, and it just...
It sure seems like it.
So.
Excellent.
Councilmember Walton.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend the City of South Lyon's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 46, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 2, Fire Prevention Code Sections 46 through 31 and 46 dash, oh, I'm sorry, 46 dash 32 and 46 dash 31, to adopt the 2015 edition of the International Fire Code.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All opposed?
Thank you, chief.
Motion passes.
New business number four this evening. First reading of ordinance limiting the use of fireworks. Recommendation is to approve this item. Does anyone have any discussion on this? Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Parliamentary procedure, you generally hold your discussion after your motion has been made in seconds.
Correct, yeah.
You've got to get in front of the assembly.
Yeah, we really haven't operated that way, so...
Yeah, we have.
We haven't.
No, we haven't.
We have.
Okay.
Okay, I make the motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend the City of South Lyon Code of Ordinances, amending Sections 46-122 and 46-127, to revise the days and time a person may ignite, discharge, or use consumer fireworks, and to revise the penalty for violation as allowed for under Public Act 635 of 2018, HB 5940, amending MCL 28.457, subsection 2 and 3.
All in favor?
Discussion?
Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you. Chief, what I have for you is, I just wanted to let you know, I'm going to pass these along to you. I've been working behind the scenes, making phone calls to representatives, when I knew that there were going to be some changes with respect to the fireworks law. And one of the things I wanted to pass along to you is, in addition to this, is House Bill Number 5941. It's not with materials, but it is discussed as a bill that had to be passed before they would pass 5940. And 5941 may have some interest to you, no, it's 5939, may have some interest to you because what they're going to do, the state is going to send up a fireworks safety fund, and that's going to be created within the Department of Treasury, and money in that fund is going to be used to fund training for firefighters. So, this may be an opportunity for some grants.
This is currently happening.
Is it already? Okay.
Lot of money has been generated with fireworks.
Yeah, yeah.
And the issue you've been finding is...
Why don't you come up to... I'm just going to give you my paperwork with my notes on it. Yeah.
So, what the money generated with the fireworks, they've been giving to, like, Oakland County, Washtenaw County, they, so all FireFire 1 and 2 programs are now funded with fireworks money, some EMT programs, hazardous material teams, there's some strict rules, and luckily, like, we have students right now in an EMT class that's completely paid for by fireworks in Hamburg. I think the Brighton School, we have a couple cadets in there, so that's going to be reduced because of the fireworks. It's really been good. Now, I'm not a huge fan of fireworks. When they first came out, I thought it was great, until my dog started melting down, so. I'm in full support of this, new ordinance, but there is money. They make a lot of money.
Then, on Bill 5941, which also goes along with 5940, that is about your authority to initiate a no-burning restriction, if, conditions, I didn't realize this. If you institute a no-burning restriction because environmental concerns are based on fire hazards or whatever, I did not know that the no-burning also affects fireworks.
That is news to me, too.
Yeah, it's in here. That's, that's why I thought it would...
South Lyon, we have a pretty good burning ordinance. I'm pretty happy here. I don't, we don't get a lot of complaints, because I think most people abide by it. The leaf pickup keeps it down in the fall. We don't have people burning on the streets or in their yard, but that is, is that new?
Yeah, this is new. This also passed, this was tied, this was tied to 5940.
Okay.
So, both of these, 30 and 41, also had to pass. My question is, is if you institute a no-burning, what is your area, what is your way of ensuring that adequate notice of the restriction is provided to the public? How do you do that?
Well, social media, City Hall notices, the website, and I think, you know, that would be the three. And then, I like Channel 19. They reached out to me after we put out a video, and I hoped to meet them and do a, and that would be something great we could talk about, so.
Okay, well, here's this also, so. Guess the phone call's paid off.
Anyone else have anything for chief? Great, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
So, we've had a motion, a second, and a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. New business number five this evening, the 2019 City Council meeting schedule.
I can speak to that if you like.
Go ahead, Lisa, thank you.
Within 10 days after the first meeting of the public body, we have to list out each date that we're going to be meeting for the year. So, we went through the calendar and just chose the second and fourth Mondays, and the only one we will have to change is May 28th, no, May 27th, which is the second Monday, we'll have to change to the 28th because it's Memorial Day.
Thank you, seems pretty, pretty...
Make a motion that we approve this schedule.
I second.
Would we like to have a discussion about that?
[laughing]
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We will move on to the budget this evening. Anyone with anything on the budget this evening? Move on to the manager's report.
First item I'll start with is the city budget. Our departments heads have met with me regarding the budget. We're already starting to formulate numbers. We'll be meeting again very shortly to finalize those numbers before we give a presentation and outline budget to City Council at a meeting within March. I want to advise you also that we did receive those transcripts regarding the testimony. We have provided them to the Ethics Board, and Ethics Board will be meeting next week. The Parks and Rec Commission, I met with their group last week, discussed potential future plans for our park system, and I'm working with them to develop a parks budget for the upcoming year. I've provided to you with councilmembers information regarding closed session. I've included information pertaining to different aspects of closed session, when it can be held, when it can't be held, discussion points. I want to make sure councilmembers do, in fact, read that information, and if you have any questions regarding that, please contact me. And the last item is that City Office's closure. Remind you that Monday, January 21st, the office will be closed for observance of Martin Luther King. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the report that I provided all of you.
All right, I think we're good. Thank you, Paul. Oh, yes, sorry, Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Paul, I wanted just to mention, thank you for creating an enlarged version of this with larger print, okay? Because this was pretty small here, okay? And I don't know about everybody, but I appreciate that, because it helps me a lot, okay? Anyway, it's, we all spent time going over it, I'm sure, and this is what we keep for our own information. We're not just filing this away. We keep this for ongoing research or review. Okay, fine.
All right, thanks, Paul. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Ryan Lehrer, 716 Grant Court. Mr. Mayor, I do request an additional three minutes, is that a problem?
So on top of the two, you needed an additional three?
Yes.
Does anyone else have a problem with that? That would be fine, Ryan.
Okay, thank you. So on, we got the transcript, so I kinda wanna go over some of this for the public and for council's knowledge. You said, the court asked you what file pertained to your PPO against Carl, which was October 31st. You also indicated in your statement that in April, you called the chief of police because you had a prowler in your home. And I also did a FOIA request for the full month of April, and there is no police report regarding you contacting the South Lyon Police Department for an investigation into possible people being on your property. I find it incredible that you waited till October 31st to make a complaint against Carl when you stated that he'd been stalking you for two years. So you just, all of a sudden, just become extremely terrified of Carl within that period of time? If he's been doing this for two years, why did you wait till October 31st? Seems kinda odd. Also, the, the court asked you, has there been any action taken on the October 31st? And you said, no, the Oakland County Sheriff, because there's a conflict of interest with the South Lyon Police Department. They originally conducted an investigation, but it was determined there was a conflict of interest, so Oakland County has taken upon themselves to investigate the matter, and if and then, take that report to the prosecutor's office. The court, so that, so is, that process is underway. That is underway. That was your testimony. That is amount to perjury. We now know that there was no Oakland County investigation. We do know that the undersheriff denied your request. You owe the South Lyon Police Department a huge apology. The men and women that serve in our police department every day, that put on a vest and a gun, go out there and protect us. And for you to stab them in the back and go over our chief of police's head and go to the undersheriff of the Oakland County Sheriff to get what you did not get, there wasn't a conflict of interest with the police department, it was you that had the conflict of interest because you didn't like that they didn't find anything on Carl. Second of all, we've had five police officers that have been killed in the line of duty. At the previous Christmas party, I was witness to you badmouthing the police department. Also, a bartender witnessed you badmouthing the police department. You called them rent-a-cops, that you work with real cops in Detroit. Do you want to tell the five families that just, an officer was just killed today? Do you want to tell those families that they're rent-a-cops because they don't work in Detroit? I'd like you to, dare you to tell them that to that husband and those children's faces. I bet you don't have the guts. Do you understand that as a lawyer, when you swear to take the oath of office as a lawyer, you are sworn to uphold the laws of the United States and the Constitution and the State of Michigan? Lying under oath is perjury. I believe the Attorney Grievance Board, when they receive all of this type of information, I suggest you may want to think about your law license, as you may be facing a suspension, a fine, or expulsion. Also, you called my mother and I a liar at the last meeting. You told me to bring proof, so here it is. Your lawyer, on the witness stand, when I was under oath, said, you indicated that you do not know where Ms. Parisian lives. I said, correct, I do not. But you filed a grievance against her in February, did you not? And I said, I did. And didn't that form require her address? I said, it did. And you did fill that form out. I did fill the form out. So you do know where Ms. Parisian lives? I said, the address is listed. I did not pay attention to Mr., to her address. I did put the address down, it's required to file a grievance. I did not look at the address. I purposely did not look at the address other than to fill out the information. I do not know where Ms. Parisian is, where her house is, what it looks like, I do not care. Your attorney questioned me. So in April, when she came home and found you on her porch where you sleepwalking, this is the third time that you've accused me of something, and I'm about sick and tired of it. You know darn well I've never been on your property, and you have no proof, none whatsoever. And I'm sick and tired of you coming to this council and to this public and attacking private citizens with absolutely no proof at all. You are the one that's a liar, not me. If you want to sit there and accuse me of sleepwalking from my property by true value all the way to your house on Liberty Street, that's a bunch of nonsense. There is not one person in this public, in this city, that would ever believe that I would walk from my house to your property. You owe my mother an apology. She's an 18-year resident that has been paying her taxes in this city. You had no right to go after her like that. You should be ashamed of yourself. Oh, and I won't be moving on either. I'll be here till the end of time.
Thank you, Mr. Lehrer.
All right, that will wrap up public comment. At this point, we'll move on to council comments this evening. Councilmember Richards, why don't you go ahead and start us off?
I don't, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of good things I want to cover, and I plan to go very fast, people. First up, I would like to show everybody this report that our fire chief, Mr. Vogel, submitted, at least it's available in City Hall, and the councilmen all got it. This was absolutely wonderful, fantastic, very illustrative. I don't remember seeing anything like it before. Thank you, Mr. Vogel. Certainly is wonderful to know we've got such a creative artists on our fire department. Okay. Number two here, I'd like to go with, I made an incorrect statement, okay? Sometime before Christmas, I think it was, might have been before Thanksgiving, I said that the Bonner House across the street, 234 Liberty, had been sold. Well, it was sold, but the deal fell through, okay? And recently, not much happened after Christmas, but since New Year's, oh, boy, it's been visited by numerous real estate people and prospective buyers. So it's back on the market again, and I'm hoping I can get a tour for the historical society in that very unique older house. Okay, next item, we lost a business in town most recently, Scrooge Barley, in the Jean Carroll Building between the Three Monk Brewery and the Bakery. Sorry to see him go. Hope somebody can come in there. It's a very nice location for anybody. Regarding our friends across the way here, the Tube Mill, there's gonna be some changes, but I'm not gonna go into it right now. And big things may be happening, and look for good things in the future. One more item here. I need some more interested parties to come forward that would like to serve on our, the cemetery commission that I wish to form, okay? I mentioned it quite thoroughly last year. I've got three or four people committed. I need six to eight. I'd like to have 10 to 12 the first year, and then some of them drop off. Anyway, the gate's still open on this, and feel free to contact me or leave notice with Judy at City Hall. And lastly, I'd just like to say, we've got something to be thankful for, people. Last year at this time, we had 30 inches of snow accumulated from the winter, through the winter, up until this point in time, and we were subsequent to 14 degrees below zero temperatures some of the time, which we have not experienced that this year, so I think we have something to be thankful for. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have several things I'd like to bring up tonight. The first, I'd like to highlight a little email that we received in our packets regarding Judy Piper and the help that she provided to a family here when they wanted to purchase some cemetery plots. And this just is another accolade to the wonderful ladies and gentlemen we have here in City Hall and how wonderful they do. So I just want to say thank you to all of them, not only to Judy, but Lisa. It, the list continues on, they're all wonderful up there, so just thank you, guys, for the hard work that you do. I also want to compliment Fury, Fury, I can't even speak. Fury Friends Rescue for their hard work with the cats and the dogs. And in the last year, they had 137 cat and kitten adoptions in 2018 and eight dogs. 73 of those adoptions came out of South Lyon Pet Supplies Plus, which is a pretty large number, considering that they're all located in three stores. So I want to thank them for their hard work continuing to get those animals adopted, and it shows the compassion here in our city, not only for the people, but for the animals as well. Congratulations to Witch's Hat Brewery, who held their annual day after Thanksgiving, day after Christmas party. With this release party, they raised $4,000 for the Huron Valley Humane Society. So again, taking care of our animals.
Way to go.
Yeah, they did a great job. Young man of JD, I don't have permission to use his last name, but he asked his extended family for money instead of Christmas gifts this year, turned around and gave that money $300 to Active Faith. What a, what an inspiration to our city that a 12-year-old boy could do this. And it, that just makes all the difference to so many different families, and I talk about Active Faith often, and I'm so glad to see that they are getting donations from young and old. So that's wonderful. It was brought to my attention that there's a gentleman here in our community concerned about the amount of paper I have in front of me at every meeting. I assure you, this is my council packet, I don't bring unnecessary paperwork with me. I don't want to carry it in here any more than anybody else sitting at this table wants to. But I would like you to know that six months ago, I contacted the mayor, and I discussed this with him, and I said, why don't we go to moving, to putting everything on flash drives? We can print what we need to print, we're not wasting paper, we're not wasting printing costs, the ladies in City Hall aren't burdened with having to put together these crazy packets. So again, I'd like to bring that up again. And Paul, if we could maybe discuss that at some point, we can certainly still make paper copies of the things that we need to, and paper copies for those that require it. But I just would like to be a little bit more environmentally friendly. And speaking of environmentally friendly, I want to bring this book up. This is Emma Environmentalist. This was written by a 1997 South Lyon graduate, Christy Cruz. Her actual last name now is Christy Cruz Kenyon, and her mother Denise Cruz, who is a New Hudson resident, did all the illustrations in this book. But this is a wonderful little reminder. Little Emma here is an environmentalist who is talking about the plastic in our lakes and oceans. And if you don't know, that's a huge concern going on right now. So they are inspiring people to become environmentalists in your little corner of the world, and I will let you know that this little book may have come out of our little corner here in South Lyon, but it's gone internationally. They had about 20 books ordered to be put into tiny little libraries over in the UK, which, which is phenomenal, to think that someone from our town wrote a book, and it's all over the world, you know? So I encourage everyone to check it out. It's on Amazon, it's on Barnes &amp; Noble, but this is our earth, folks, we gotta take care of it. And I know that South Lyon offers the recycle bins, I'm not sure if we used them all up, but go ahead, get a recycle bin, do some recycling, and think about little Emma, okay? Have a great night.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Kurtschwell?
I would like to address a, on a very, very serious note, a, an issue that was detailed in a note that was slipped under my office during December. It took me some time to research it, and I, I found it very interesting, and I think there's a lot of merit to it. We know that on October 31st, Councilwoman Parisian filed a criminal complaint with the South Lyon Police Department. We know that that investigation found that there was no criminal conduct with respect to the council member. We know that Parisian did not seek a PPO on October 31st, when she first learned about the statements made about her, but she waited to file the PPO until after she learned that the South Lyon Police Department had found no criminal conduct. Without going into any detail, this timeline does have some significance. It is my speculation, and I think it is based on some good information that I read in the transcript, that there will be a lawsuit that will be following this proceeding. But let's face it, suing Carl Richards, you get nothing. He has no money. So what Parisian needed was a deep pocket with the city. On November 26th, Parisian pleaded with council to refer her allegations to the Board of Ethics. Bingo. This is what the note was about that was left for me at my office. Once the four council members voted to refer her allegations to the Board of Ethics, she now had a nexus to the city, to now sue the city for her alleged damages she believes she has incurred because of some alleged conduct of Carl Richards. She would not have a lawsuit against the city if it had not been for the vote of Pelchat, Kennedy, Kivell, and herself. She was very, very, very clever, and her ruse to get Richards before the Board of Ethics had nothing to do with his conduct. It had everything to do with creating the nexus that she needed with the city. So she basically has been handed a Lotto ticket. Additionally, not only did those council members that voted to put this to the Board of Ethics give her the lawsuit, but now the Board of Ethics is reviewing this matter, and she now has three potential witnesses who will testify on her behalf if the Board of Ethics renders an opinion favorable to her. Three Board of Commissioners that we appointed on this council potentially are gonna be witnesses for Parisian in a lawsuit, and who knows what those damages will be. So for those individuals that voted out of emotion and did not sit back and wait for all the facts to come in, the consequences, I think, could be grave. So for the mayor who sits here on his pedestal and says that there's people on this council that may not be thinking out for the city or for the voters, as he did at the last meeting, I think you better take a look at the severe consequences of that vote, because none of you were thinking about the city that night. Basically, what the note said that was left under my door was that the Board of Ethics was never populated, and here were the reasons why. I have put it in my own words, because you might, might know who the person is that wrote this communication. The Board of Ethics was never populated because any referral to the Board of Ethics of a matter could provide the sufficient and legal nexus to a legal proceeding for something that otherwise could not be sustained. A referral of a union employee to the Board of Ethics may violate the disciplinary provisions of their contract. So for those union employees that are out there tonight, I'm just telling you, if you go before the Board of Ethics, it might violate your union contract. A referral of an employee matter that seeks discipline or suspension to the Board of Ethics may violate that employee's right to request a closed meeting under the Open Meeting Act, because employees and public officials have a right to ask for a closed meeting. A discussion of an employee matter in a public setting such as the Board of Ethics may violate city policy as to the privacy of an employee records and their personnel file. Fifth, a serious violation of the city's ethics ordinance probably means termination, and the Board of Ethics at that point is irrelevant. So it appears that the statements that were provided to me over the Christmas holiday do have some serious merit, and this nightmare that we are going through looks like it has only started. Last, I have another important matter regarding quorum of council. In 2004, the city amended the charter to expand council by two council members, and that is Chapter 4, Section 4.1. Section 4.5 defines quorum as three members of council, and that is mandatory. Whoever was the city attorney at the time of the amendment in Section 4.1 did not amend the quorum- the quorum in 4.5. So I did my research over the holidays, and quorum is, according to the, to the charter, is three. I went to Robert's Rules of Order, I will provide those to the, to the city attorney tonight. Robert's Rules of Order says that quorum is a majority of the members of the board or committee unless, unless there is a rule of the parent body or the organization. Under Robert's Rules of Order, it says, "It is an incorporated organization. The corporate charter supersedes all other rules, none of which can legally contain anything in conflict with the charter." I then went to the Open Meetings Act, and I then reviewed the Attorney General's handbook, and it says, "What is quorum? Look to the statute charter provision or ordinance creating the board." So my conclusion is, as doing this research, is that quorum for the city is actually three and not four. And you can't make the argument it was a mistake, when the charter section I am talking about is only three sections away, and it is in capital letters. So the only conclusion I can reach is that it was intended by the drafters of the change of 4.1 to continue to keep quorum as three members of council and not four. And why is that important? Because at the PPO hearing, there were three council members that were in that hearing. Carl Richards, Mary Parisian, and Steve Kennedy, and the judge says, "How many, how many council members are there? Out of seven, we almost have a quorum. There you go, we have an Open Meetings Act violation, I'm just cheesing." What the judge didn't know was that quorum, under our charter, is three. I think we need to do some work on this. I think that I would recommend that we have a ballot proposal going on the ballot in November, and we change quorum to be flexible, to feed, to fit the number of individuals that are on council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Basically, I just, I wanna highlight some of the, the good work that's being done by the Salem South Line District Library tonight. First, I'd like to congratulate Donna Olson and the Salem South Line District Library team for achieving a milestone this week, as they prepare to join the newly constructed addition to the existing library structure. This will set the stage for heating the new expansion, and beginning to finish the interior of the new addition. I'd also like to announce that the Salem South Line District Library is cosponsoring an event with the VFW Post 1224, celebrating Motown's sixtieth anniversary. This will be a free, live music event that will be held Friday, January 25th, at the VFW Post 1224, on East McCady Street, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. It'll feature award-winning author, professor, musician ML Liebler, performing with his band. This event is supported in part by a grant from the Michigan Humanities Council, which is a state affiliate of the National Endowment for the Humanities. Further questions can be answered by visiting the Salem South Line District Library website, or contacting the, the library directly. I'd encourage all of our Motown fans to come out for a night of music and fun. I'd also like to encourage all the residents of our community to drop off their newspapers, magazines, catalogs, mail, and paper at any time at the library, and recycle it in those large, green and yellow bins in the parking lot. The library receives money for every ton of paper collected. Just a note, though, do not include any books, food boxes, or cardboard. The library will certainly appreciate your support. And as a follow-up to Councilmember Walton's discussion, the city still has a large number of those recycle bins, the mobile bins that are available through GFL. If we have residents that are interested in getting those, on the website, it instructs you how to fill out an application for them, and they will be provided to city residents free of charge. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Parisian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first and foremost, I just wanted to say that I'm not gonna dignify the people that are coming out here and speaking against me. I'm not gonna give you a response. I already gave my response last week, and I'm not on trial. Carl's not on trial. No one is suing the city. So I know that you may think that this is a conniving effort, to sue the city for millions of dollars, but that's actually not the case. The only thing that mattered to me was my protection, and I did what I needed to do, and I, I'm satisfied with that, and that's all I'm, I'm seeking, and I've gotten what I needed. So from there, I'm not looking for anything more. But you can understand why people don't come forward. You can understand why no one wants to come forward, because they will get attacked, they will get bullied. There are women and men all over the world who will not step forward because of this very situation. You have individuals who will bully you until you resign, or they'll bully you until you kill yourself. So there's situations here that are so much bigger than what you see, and for my protection and my safety, I took the actions I thought were necessary. And I understand that you're upset that your friend is in trouble, and I get that, but sometimes you have to be held accountable for your actions. And Carl Richards knows that, and that's why he's, he's not talking back. He admitted to what he admitted to, and we have witnesses, and we're moving forward. This is the end of it. If you wanna continue on with it, that's fine, but this is the last I'll say of it. Let the Board of Ethics do their job. Let's move forward with the city. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Parisian. Councilmember Kivell?
I wanted to piggyback on what Mr. Donahue had said with thanking Abin Marcia for their service with DDA. It's always, I mean, they're, they're very, very busy people to begin with, so any time that they step out of taking care of their business to try to help the city, I think that that deserves a great deal of appreciation. And as Rose had mentioned, this, the little letter about Judy, I think that that is an example of all the behavior of all the ladies, Carol, Patricia, Tara.
Phyllis.
Phyllis. Boy, yeah, she, she was on, she was on vacation there for a while. I hadn't seen her. Everybody steps up to the plate when, when somebody comes in to be asking questions or needs some kind of a service performed at the desk. Judy is particularly adept at things that take place with the cemetery, and that's a really, a really huge benefit for us, because typically, when you're coming to speak about cemetery plots and that, especially when it happens suddenly, she has a very deft hand at, at being calming and reassuring to people, so that gift is enjoyed by the, the fact that she's taking our, taking care of our residents out there. The idea of the, the whole idea of the quorum, that's been spoken to hundreds of times during the course of the last three years, four years, whenever, actually, no, you know what? When you sit up here for as long as I have, you kinda lose track of time. Whenever it was that we ended up going to a seven, seven-person board, there was immediately recognized that the quorum was going to be for, the idea that it didn't end up going into the charter, I think is probably a function of the fact that it had to have been done by, the change needed to be brought on by an election, and that, that I'm sure is where that, that came from, so. But we've always behaved and, and acted as though everything was a four-member quorum, so it's just another one of those larks to try to throw a monkey wrench in things. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kivell. I don't have much to say. I did wanna thank Susan Martin. She put on a fantastic seminar with the Huron River Watershed in regards to PFAS, and it was a full house in here, and it was very informational, at times scary, but I wanna thank Susan Martin for putting that together, and, you know, that's, a lot of people, had a lot of interest, not just here from the city, Green Oak Township, Salem Township, Lyon Township, there was a, it was, like I said, we were, we were bringing in extra chairs for everybody, so thank you. I did wanna recognize, oh, great point. That will, that seminar will be on Channel 19, and available on the city's YouTube page too, if you have any interest on catching up on that. Thank you, Steve. I did wanna recognize, long-term, a longtime assistant principal here in South Line, who is retiring later this month, Linda Bowman, is retiring later this month. Linda has been here and was a assistant principal when I was a student. She's been an incredible coworker for almost twenty years, so thank you for your commitment to the community, and best of luck going forward with, for Linda Bowman. And then, congratulations to the South Line East Girls Basketball Team, and the South Line East Boys Basketball Team. We had a doubleheader at the jungle last Friday, and the East swept the night with two exciting games and two big wins. I know I say this when we were in football season, and it's always a great rivalry there, but the basketball games are a completely different environment, 'cause the two student sections are in the same building, and they're yelling back and forth at each other, and chanting, and it's a, it's a great atmosphere. They play one more time this winter, so if you get a chance to go out there and check it out at South Line East High School, I would really encourage you to do it. You know, it's local fun, and, and I think you'd really enjoy the atmosphere, it's a really cool thing, so. With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn this evening.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Have a good night, all.